Okay, we have to go.
Caption shortly. All right, we're good. Okay, make a motion to open meeting for a second. I second. Roll call please.
Trustee Marshall. Trustee Co. Hi, trustee like here.
Hi.
Trustee like it.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Ah.
Motion passes.
Okay. Uh, is there any board member who has a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the items on the agenda?
Thank you.
I do not.
I do not.
Oh, that was in tandem. I do not. Okay. Uh, Dorothea, if you could give us the flip notes.
Sure.
Compliance, please.
Wow, I just totally lost my place in time. Um, if anybody wishes to speak to the board, please give your name and address. If you're on Zoom, please, um, either reach your hand or put your question in Q and A and I'll be happy to ask the board some questions. And let's just try to meet nice to each other. It's a great meeting.
Uh, everybody, please silence your cell phones if you haven't already done so. Um, so this is, um, a continuing of our budget workshop and also a special meeting. So we have a number of items before us. Uh, first up is the consideration of the assessment district. Dorothea, do you want to?
Jeff helped me with this.
Yeah, helping you.
We received the bid. We had one bidder from Casella. The rate per month was twenty eight eighty seven. They did bid on the twenty two months to live in two years. Um, I used a, a diligent. Get the word. Twelve percent is what I did the additional fee for coverage.
For the admin fees and.
For the administrative fees.
And also, didn't you load into sort of upfront sort of legal fees?
There's legal, there's mailings, there's staff time. And after talking to the town, it was really encouraged, um, because he said, you know, when the new district doesn't play his hand and that's all they're doing is answering the phone. So, yeah, so give everything. You know, plan, and that might be something that can be reduced in the future, but I figured it was a good starting point. Um, so the assessment to the tax bill for the same for the first ten months would be three twenty three thirty. Now it's ten months because we're giving them time to switch their caller and take care of all that. The next year it would be three eighty seven ninety six a year.
And this would be what date start?
Um, when did we start that? It was in June, it was August.
Yeah.
Last one?
Yeah.
Do we have those figures? What's the thirty two twenty three that we?
Two months up to start.
Right. The thirty two thirty three is a month.
Okay.
After the administrative fee.
Okay.
Okay.
So originally it was twenty eight eighty seven from this one bidder. Understand, we'll get to that in a minute. And then it goes up to thirty three eighty three. With, with our capturing back our administrative price.
Yeah. But the bottom line, it's thirty.
Yeah. Bottom line, and it's loaded, you know, with everything that we need to do on.
So that would be the assessment. If you go to the actual bid sheet, there is additional that would have to be reviewed. Um, if a homeowner wanted their garbage picked up at the house, that's another fourteen dollars per month. There's all of their additional fees are listed in that.
It's in the bid and I have it.
Yep. So that's the first part of this.
So as far as recyclables, is this a every week recycle as well as garbage? So local recyclable and garbage would be every week?
Yep.
Okay. Now, I'm, I'm having two weeks for recyclables and others.
I know, I was thinking.
Yeah, it is included in recyclables.
That's it.
Yeah, yeah, because most residents really want it every week.
Yeah, I have recyclables and garbage.
I know, I do too. I have like one little tiny bag. Um, do you want to keep going about who we want to talk about? Feedback that we got from other haulers as well.
Correct. No, we can go ahead and.
Yeah. Yeah, we were surprised because initially when the bids went out, followers would call in and they would request additional information. So we knew that they were going to want to put, put together a bid and then they didn't respond. And so we were a little surprised. So, um, we reached out and, um, they, they said that the turnaround for the bidding cycle was just way too short for them to be able to properly respond. Um, and they, they all really wanted to bid if they had a little bit longer time to do so. Um, and I think in fairness, because we only did one response, we probably should look at that so we can, you know, give everybody ample time.
Right.
You know?
Um, even this bid, because honestly, I didn't think we were getting a bid, came in two minutes to eleven.
Yeah, two minutes before the deadline.
He was.
Yeah, he, and it was, his GPS took him to the bell money. But, uh.
So what, what we're saying is to extend the timeline for the, uh, couple of the bids. This board may want to reconsider, just, you know, reissuing a bid, uh, giving, you know, the whole group of haulers, you know? And potentially more, yeah, more to look at, more to consider.
Okay. So my question is if we do reconsider and, and push it, then that means that we won't be able to make a timeline for this year and not for next year.
Right.
That's, that's very important, please.
That is a piece, but, um, the other consideration is the single bid that we did receive, um, is not just for one year. This is for two.
For two, yes.
So it would lock us in, um, with just only one person, you know, only one company responding. I'm not so sure. Um, I'd rather just be, I'd rather do the diligence.
Yeah.
Kind of, I mean, that's how they get the best calls. Yeah, right, because I think, um, I think they all really want to be competitive and bid. They just needed the time because, you know, they want the village. I mean, it's.
Okay.
The one good thing out of it is at least someone is, they are interested in bidding two years out, which.
Yeah.
Which is a nice little thing because that kind of establishes a way for the taxpayers for a couple of years. It's not every year we're going out to bid.
And the other haulers may do the same thing too. You know, we just don't know because they just simply couldn't turn it around given the timeframe.
Um, with the legal fees that you mentioned, was that just for year one, just for startup? Or is that going, uh, continual, all, all for?
Well, just generalizing, trying to put all the legal fees with Turner with setting things up, with getting the legal notices, there's all that stuff. I don't have enough data to, it'd be the first year of putting the budget together. So, you know, this is really Dorothea taking numbers and doing.
What we want to make clear is we're covering the possible first year, but we may be able to reduce it in subsequent years. Because now we have a template, we have, you know, the model.
Yeah. I just, and that's not something the town could really give me because.
No, because it's different.
Totally different.
Yeah.
But they said, you know, as Paul Shankle said to me, he loses his hand and for over a third of his time to the refuse district.
Yeah. And also, I mean, you know, to be fair though, they're implementing many districts repeatedly. You know, so as they come online, they're getting the same kinds of questions and feedback for neighborhood.
Yeah, which we're bouncing in the beginning of getting.
Right, right. And so I think, you know, for all of the village, we would essentially be in that first year kind of a one and done.
Yeah, once that gets established, it'll be a lot smoother, but without having any data to.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. Okay.
So that's how. Do we have the ability to, before accepting this, to have any kind of open meeting or public meeting for input from residents? Or can we not do that unless we?
We can accept it.
I'm just kind of curious.
Well, I've seen some people that were at the point where you've got, they're just ready to be created.
Yeah, there's two, well, it's gonna get about two separate actions.
Yes.
So you could create a district, um, by moving it to public hearing, you've got the local law all set. And then you could let, you could have the bids roll in at some point in the next half a year or so and get it all set up for the next fiscal year if you want. Or you can take the one bid, um, and set it all. But I, it feels to me like if you want the district and we're right here, then if you don't do it now, the whole industry recreating effort and then up whether would you actually do it?
I personally would work on that piece. Yeah, I would like to hear the residents.
I would like to hear what. That's, that's the process, we have to do that.
Right. I mean, I would like to hear.
That process, just setting up the district partners.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, that, we could make a motion, right, we want to do, so we can move that forward for the test or these.
Right.
And then get the feedback from everybody. So, any other thoughts, any other thoughts, Sandy?
Um, yeah, I, I appreciate the, uh, the work on, on getting the quotes. Um, I, it's good to, uh, to see that we did have Casella respond and it does appear to be some savings there. I like the fact that we'd be willing to come and pick up every week. Uh, you know, that's a, a sort of point for many residents, including myself now, that they only come by weekly and you've got to remember which week to, which have been out.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would also like to wait for other votes too, um, and, and see who else comes in. I, I guess one concern that I have is that, um, Casella is gaining a lot of market traction. And I feel like once they put everybody else out of business, they're in a great position to raise the rates. Um, and we won't be necessarily saving a whole lot.
They have been in a big opposition, no, you're right.
Good for it. So, um, you know, I think it's definitely worth looking at the other proposals that come in. Um, but overall, you know, I, I guess as, as far as public hearing, um, so before, before the, uh, the public hearing, I, I think, um, uh, in terms of understanding the costs, we've discussed at quite a bit of length about the cost that they're allocated towards the sewer district. Um, and I appreciate Dorothea's first pass on the, um, on the refuse district costs. Um, one of the meetings that I think we would really need to have before making that a part of the budget is, is a separate meeting just on understanding what those numbers are and what the correct proportion is to the refuse district. Um, you know, as a part of trustee and, and mayoral, um, stipends, or, or is it, you know, just administrative and, and legal as we've discussed? Um, so I think it's worth just, you know, having the board go down that list. Um, and I guess as, as I've maintained all along too, I, I would prefer to get through the next, um, uh, the period until we've got the budget adopted. Um, especially if we've got a year of, of leeway here, I, I know that we've got a lot of things that are in motion. Um, I don't really see much harm in, in waiting for a couple of months just to get the, uh, budget in place. So I, I would not be in favor of scheduling an additional meeting this time for public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Hey, any thoughts?
May.
I'm sorry, Matt.
May.
Yeah, I have to make.
I mean, look, I'm in favor. I think the response is, hey, look, we tried, right? I think a lot of us look at this favorably. I think we get it done next year, that's a big win. You know, this is the first year really, the last three months, we've kind of really been bringing it all together. Uh, we've seen some experience in the town, so if it takes us a little longer, I know there's a pretty good swell of public input. But we're moving it forward. I think people can be comfortable, we're moving into public hearing. We schedule something in, in May. Uh, I personally would rather have it on books, tell them what it is and move forward with that. I don't think we have to necessarily adopt anything, push it public here today, or just announce that it's going to public hearing, but set the date in May.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
I guess you know, a lot of times, so arrangements to be there.
Yeah, so I'm final in May in public hearing and we can do that today if you want.
Uh, Lily, any, any other thoughts?
No.
Budget adoption has to be by when?
Budget adoption has to be by end of May.
Okay. Just May.
Okay. So can the final, so can I make a motion to, um, move forward with the public hearing, but have scheduled the meeting in May? Can I do that?
You can, but can we? All right, so we're, I just want to knock some things off, at least with the district bid. Like the board's going to kind of accepting that bid, like a motion to decline that bid.
Yeah, let's start with that.
I'll make a motion to decline that on the basis of the village's latency, additional bids prior to accepting any.
Second. We have a motion of second, any discussion? Well, okay, we'll call.
Trustee like it. Trustee Lanfair. Hi, trustee Co. Hi, trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer. I, motion yes.
Okay.
All right, so the assessment dies, so then it would just be the set, setting of the public, the law in May. And I have my deal on the news in May.
We've got a.
There's always something on yourself.
Fourteenth and the twenty eighth. We can do it in the middle of May during our normal board meeting. It should be May fourteenth, that'd be the very exclusive one.
That sounds good.
I like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Come on, we're giving you May. Give us the fourteen.
Yeah.
You got it, yes.
Make a motion to, to the, um, consider, move the public hearing for the refuse district. So, the refuse district, we're setting up the refuse district to our normal meeting on May twenty eighth.
Fourteen.
May, dang, how did I do that? May fourteen.
Six o'clock.
At, what time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
For a public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, roll call please.
Okay, trustee Co. Hi, trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee like it.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion yes. Yay, bad, bad. Okay, so the refuse district budget, you can just trash.
You know, you're not going to trash it.
I, I think it's the basis for this.
I mean.
Yeah.
When we mentioned.
Yeah.
In May, in May.
We're moving on.
Are there any costs betted in the refuse district budget that now have to circle back?
No, because honestly, I received the bids on Friday, trying to get the package together. I just threw a quick budget together because, as I said, I don't.
Because you're working on six dollars.
Just wanted to.
No, nothing affected the other budgets. Truly, if we do move forward, that is something that would have to look at the other budgets and take into consideration.
Good.
And I was sitting on the basis, it was a tentative budget.
Yep.
So multi-year capital.
So we're already at six? Number six on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
About fifteen.
We're on it. Oh, four sixteen, so.
Dorothea's gone home.
Excited.
Okay. So.
Yep, here we are.
So there was some questions related to the GML and I think with Jeff, there was some concern. So, I'm going to throw it back to you.
I answered your questions, are there any further questions?
No, well, just for, in, in case anyone's, um, following along in, in the public, I, I guess I'll, I'll just kind of recap what I was thinking here. Um, I, I did correspond with Jeff and, and Dorothea, um, and briefly with, uh, Dave on this. Um, what, what I was thinking is that, uh, basically right now we have a, a proposed, uh, tentative budget that is really justified by the capital plan, by the multi-year capital plan. Um, you know, if, if anybody looks at the, at the operational proposed annual budget, they're like, what the heck is going on here? And, and then when you look at the multi-year plan, the pieces kind of fall into place, um, which is a really great thing and, and that's what we should be doing. Um, I think that, uh, you know, the, the way that I would like to see the budget fall out is where the budget presentation has a component on the, the long-term capital plan. Um, and, and those two things really go in tandem. Um, so New York State has a, a way of formally adopting the multi-year capital plan. It's very, very similar to what we've been doing. And that's by design because the, the document that we've been following from the, the comp caller, um, and, and there's a spreadsheet template we use at the beginning as well. All that stuff is really based on, um, uh, New York State, uh, GML ninety nine G. Um, so what we have is great. And I think that it's very close to, um, to being able to be formally adopted. Um, so I'd like to, to push that forward. Um, I think that there are a couple of places we need to polish things up and add a little bit of specificity, but I don't see any, um, uh, hard blocks or just of this tone. Um, so the two issues that I was looking at are that, um, our plan goes out pretty well, I think. Um, you know, definitely very well to three years. I think in some places there's a, a sketch out to six years. Um, uh, the, the GML calls for a six-year plan in all cases. Um, and I think that, um, you know, we just need to take a look and see if we've got enough of an idea, um, going out that far about what we would need to, um, uh, to make that work. Now, keep in mind too, that even with GML ninety nine G, they expect annual revisions. Um, you know, you're looking at this plan with the budget. So, um, that doesn't mean everything has to be perfect out to six years, it just means we've got to have an idea. Um, and I, I think you already did. The other thing is a little bit of specificity about what projects would be undertaken and how they would be paid for and how that impacts the budget. And I think we've already done some work in that direction too. So, um, generally what, uh, ninety nine G says is that, um, the, the timelines, uh, for the budget would also apply to the, uh, the capital plan. So I guess we would have a, a public hearing for the, um, uh, the capital plan as well, which kind of corresponds with the, uh, budget timeline. So that's, that's what I'd like the board to, to consider.
Yeah. Well, could you clarify? In other words, this is going to be running on a parallel track with, uh, with the budget? And so when it moves forward to public hearing, in a perfect world, we would be looking at this first.
Yeah.
And talk about adopting it first and then adopt the budget. Because this is, the budget is based on.
Yes, I, I think so, and, um.
So all we need to do is change, add another year on here? It says five-year capital.
Maybe not even, because if you look down here and count, I think we've actually got six.
I think we do. So just change this to six.
Title.
No, we have six now.
So, yeah, and, and I think, you know, there's a really great precedent for, for how this is done. Well, this is the justification for the budget. And if, um, I know everybody on this board was involved with the, uh, the zoning code update, we did a while ago, you know, zoning laws work, um, in a, a similar way. You've got a comprehensive plan that forms the substantial basis for the, the zoning laws. Um, and in twenty nineteen, this board adopted the, the comp plan and then do the zoning codes. So I, I think this really makes a lot of sense to, to consider in tandem as we've already been doing.
Do we have to make a motion to change it, the name, the title of the?
Of the document?
No. No. So you'll just write a six there and, yeah.
I, I think what we.
Okay.
Mechanically, it seems to me that what we need to do is, is just, um, uh, set this, um, send this to public hearing, um, and direct staff to, um, to continue working on this to, um, bring it up to spec with GML ninety nine G.
So you're saying it's complete enough? This is now in graph form, it is complete enough now for us to actually vote on it and move it to public hearing? That's, that's what I'm hearing.
I think it's pretty close. There are a couple of.
Well, pretty close, is it, or, you know, we, because it would involve a motion, it would involve this board moving this document forward the way it is presented to everybody right now.
I, I had two, um, very, you know, kind of nitpicky detail type, uh, questions about the document. Other than that, yeah, I would say, let's, let's do that. And, um, my, my vote on the, on moving the budget forward would be contingent on, on moving this forward since it's.
Yeah, we're, we're well aware of that for sure.
I appreciate it.
But tonight, we have the deadline to, to vote on a tentative budget. Okay, so regardless of, and, and I, and I, I mean it only to the extent of process.
Mm-hmm.
Um, regardless of whether there is this plan in front of us, tonight, this board has to make a decision about adopting the tentative budget. Regardless. Okay, I just want to make that clear for the public and on the record.
Well, actually, just to clarify on that point, I, I thought that we actually, um, the twentieth was the deadline to give the board the, the tentative draft budget. But actually to move it to public hearing, I thought we actually had another week if we pushed it.
You'd have to schedule a special.
We'd have, we'd have to have yet another special meeting and we've had a neighbor. This is a special meeting even now on other stuff. I mean, you know, it's. Um, I would move on.
But I'd still try to get it done.
Okay, yeah, what were we going to say?
I was going to say my concerns with the multi-year capital. Because I feel like I've spent the last two weeks in my head into this plan. I feel it's very draft because I think I have moved to another budget year. It needs to be moved, I think things need to be, decisions need to be made by the board on some of these items. Um, my other concern is we did put out the RFP for Bernie Donner, just take a look, and I do feel it still needs to be vetted by.
And that was something the board would agree to, just why we issued the RFP in the first.
You know, not that the board doesn't have the financial, I just, you know, there was a plan in place to have this vetted and make sure we're solid. And I do believe, you know, it does need the public hearing, it needs public input. But that's my only concern is I feel a lot of this is still.
Still raw.
It's still raw.
Yeah, so can, can this be, um, proposed as a tentative six-year capital plan to allow us to go to public hearing, just like we do for the budget?
And my concern would be if I'm putting on a legal for the draft budget, it should be complete for the public to review, then it's not amended until the adoption. I guess.
In, in your budget, you may go wrong, you, you are not bound, uh, to keep the final life tentative.
Correct, the board can change it.
It's supposed to be as a tentative budget.
But this would be the document I would lead as the tentative, as, when we, when the tentative budget is adopted, that's the one we advertise.
Right.
Everything in there.
Right.
So this would be what we would advertise.
As tentative.
Yeah.
But I have, I'm, go ahead.
The capital plan, there's no mechanism, the law to do a tentative capital plan. And anything that goes to the public would have to be pretty close to.
Yeah, this is it.
So, when, when you adopt, when is, what do you have in the public hearing to adopt the final budget?
The public hearing to adopt the final budget typically has been the last meeting of the month.
Of March?
Of April.
April.
The, the suggestion I had in the past, and we did this last year and it worked out quite nice, because we also do organizational at the same time. Is set a special meeting just for the budget and the organization, because they are two monsters together, I think is the best way to handle them.
So, even if you were to, uh, uh, send a tentative like for public hearing tonight, you still have time for the capital plan to catch up to the final budget.
Yes. And part of that, and I.
When, when would it have to be moved, public hearing to catch up with that?
Oh, to, to the window?
Then this is me turning.
The normal, the normal public hearing.
Then it could go our next one.
Uh.
It could go the next meeting next week. I.
No, I mean, I guess we'd have to look backwards from when do you expect to have the final budget hearing? The last April meeting is the twenty third. But you said you wanted a special meeting.
And I'm okay.
You're not here.
No.
So that needs to more reason to schedule this meeting.
So we're going to need another.
You're set, schedule closer to the thirtieth or move it closer to the last hour?
The thirtieth is a Tuesday, that would be our next Tuesday of April, after the twenty third.
April thirtieth.
My, April thirty.
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, April thirty.
You can adopt the budget that day.
Yeah. I can't. Question is if we have any other thing going on in the room?
And then we would have time to vet this with, um, our financial advisor, because that was the direction from the board.
You know, you couldn't adapt this before you had a budget. If you need more time with.
There's nothing going on in the room on April thirtieth. So if the board is agreeable, we can set the organizational and the budget option and in the multi-year at that date.
I would certainly do that.
Yes.
So when we set that public hearing, if that raises agreement, we set a special meeting for April thirty for that focus.
Yes, please.
Now, what time are we doing it?
We would, by thirty, by thirty? Because it would be the only agenda item and the organizational takes.
Okay.
And keep the capital plan budget on every agenda between now and then.
It's, that's what I've been deemed to do.
Awesome.
Yes.
She carries it with her everywhere she goes, just so you know.
I like it.
Yeah.
So Jeff, you're, you're saying that there's a special provision in the law which allows us to modify the budget in any way after the tentative budget. But that same fact doesn't hold true for everything else that goes to public hearing, right?
Right.
This could have to submit, that makes sense.
Huh. Yeah, my concern is really to rid of, of, I have been here, moved to another budget year. I haven't, nobody's told me where to push it to.
Yes.
And I really feel like.
Direction.
I mean, that's just me trying to get numbers and smooth things out and make things work. That's my concern. I mean, I'm glad everybody's happy with it. I just want to make sure what we're looking at.
Right.
Is ninety nine percent what.
And meanwhile, again, I'm going to say it one last time, it will go to our financial advisor for the direction of the board.
Well, we put a bid out to request one, but we've actually had great success internally, I think, creating a plan that was pretty good. I, again, can't reach a conclusion prior to April, I'm not prepared to adopt a budget that's tentative on it.
Um, I think they can take a look and get back. I mean, they're, there are financial advisors, that's, that's what this is. We're, there are financial advisors. That's that's what this is. It's like, gee, we can fit you in in September. No, that this, they're expecting this, they responded to the bid, they're aware of this and they're aware very much of our process because they deal with municipalities.
And I can reach out and ask them, just take an overview if there's anything they see immediately that causes concern.
So then, um, could we invite them for an house? To, we have a regular meeting next Tuesday. Could we?
That's too tight of that.
We don't have a budget yet, but. And see if they're able to make it. I mean, that's five days.
Yeah, let's do that. And if not, we can go to the next one. You know, just to make sure we're fitting.
Yep.
Sure, let's do that. Just see what happens.
The twenty-sixth.
Yeah, let's see how that goes. Yeah, Lily. Dorothy, you said you had other. Um, decisions that need to be made by the trustee before this.
Absolutely.
Could you use the specific?
Yeah, I think specifically, anything that's being moved that they agree where it goes and then it lands in that budget year and is accounted for. I I think that's appropriate. It's not a decision I feel as the treasurer I should be making. I think that's on your level. And you know, I looked at it, I said it's not doable here, it needs to be moved, but where it's moved to. You know, I'm moving it. I just know it needs to go. Um, I think that's an important decision.
Okay, let's let's have, I I'd like to go down that list. We might as well just quickly do that in this meeting, unless there's a.
That's where I'm going. She can't move forward without direction.
Right, yeah.
The whole point of.
I guess.
That's why we have, so we get direction to the treasurer.
Before, before we get to moving items, though, I I just wanted to ask the board. Is everything that is on the capital plan something that you're okay with? Because, you know, we're making decisions essentially about what we're going to buy and and do. So is all this stuff? You know, because if it's not, if we're not on the same page of that, maybe we just found out we're moving the items that we deferred, right? So I would say let's just quickly hit up page one and then go down the list. So there's a few things right now.
Can I start again?
Yeah.
You need me for this part?
No.
I don't hope there's anything legal.
I don't think there is. I guess that's, you know, sorting now. But thank you. Thanks so much for your help and.
Yeah, now the sunscreen.
Yeah. But this was asked, so the question is, is the tentative general budget review intended to move budget review? The adoption thereof. So just a question, this is legal. If you don't adopt the tentative budget, you're not aware of the prior budget. You know, how does that work? What happens then? Your, it's your budget. It's your, it's your budget, it's whatever.
Yep.
And if the board doesn't move forward by the deadline, I need to post the budget, it's the budget officer's.
And when is that deadline?
Well, I gave you till tonight.
Yeah.
So, because.
And it's your authority then to do what?
I send this to public hearing.
You send this to public hearing even without our adoption?
You get it.
Are you sure?
Well, it's gotta go to public hearing either way. So tentative budget.
I thought it just became the budget.
No, no, yes, they still, still public hearing, still, it still needs to go in front of the public.
Yeah, that would be an awful lot of power.
It's not power.
Well, not having.
Get it adopted with the board's intent.
My. My understanding, and it's just me, if you don't accept it, if you don't accept it, if you don't make a decision on it, it becomes the tentative public hearing and it needs to be put out to public hearing.
All right.
To me, the public always has to have that opportunity to chime in.
Nice follow-up question. In a very hypothetical case, uh, we. Request revisions and they're not forthcoming from the budget officer who ended the budget in a way that we would want would not with at the end of the month. Does the tentative budget that you would move forward, the one that just continues to move forward, or are you at our?
What?
I don't understand. I understand now. All I'm asking is. Let's say that the tentative budget isn't adopted by the board, but you move it forward, right? We know we want to finish up the capital plan before we adopt the final budget. That may require changes to tentative budget. You're in to the direction of the board to do that.
Correct.
Okay, beautiful. And then by the end of April, like what happened last year, if there's some adjustments or revisions to match up with what the capital plan. For now, final version looks like. Then we just put it in the budget and we adopt the final that's different than the tentative. My guess is it's not going to be different by that much, but. I guess what I'm asking is regardless of whether or not this board approves a budget at the end of April of the final budget. The tentative budget that you presented here tonight. Essentially becomes the budget.
If. The board doesn't make changes to the tentative budget at some point along this process. The tentative budget stands. If the board makes changes, the change that the board makes becomes the budget.
Right, okay. So what I'm saying is this tentative budget, whether or not we adopt it tonight or not. It's moving forward to public hearing, whether or not it's the budget officer doing so or the board doing so.
I would guess that's the way it goes. I have assumed that's the way it goes from now.
Yeah, I mean, if. If you don't do anything with the budget, the tentative budget becomes the budget.
The board takes no action. You don't even want to vote on it.
Yeah, right. So then it becomes a tentative budget.
We have a budget.
And I have to.
So the same exact thing happens, which is we're trying to connect these two things together. Whether or not we adopt it or don't adopt it. The fact of the matter is this tentative budget is going to the public.
Because under New York state municipal law, we are required. To have an adopted budget that has gone before the public. We are not required to have the capital planned. The way we're we're moving it forward. We're not required to do that. We can get the budget adopted and continue to work on the capital plan. I understand. Where this, you know, where some of the board members want to say we will not have the budget unless we have the capital plan. This is sort of, for lack of a better way to put it, my understanding of, not above and beyond, but. It doesn't have this, there's no language, there's nothing committing us to doing this prior to adopting a tentative budget at all. This is the the requests from other board members to have this put in place. And that's why, no matter what, whether there's action or inaction. On the part of this board to take the vote on the tentative budget tonight. We must, under New York state law, move a budget forward. Regardless of a capital plan, regardless.
I I agree with that. Dave, I I think the other thing that's important to recognize is that it's not necessarily an all or nothing thing with the tentative budget. If this board decides that certain items on the tentative budget should be changed, you know, aside from paying the basic bills, which we have an obligation to do with, which Dorothy is gonna carry through with. We can also vote to, you know, as as a majority of the board, we can say, we'll take this out, right? And and we can adjust that tentative budget.
You have authority to do it with the majority.
Absolutely. And and because budgets are, you know, even after they're adopted, they're still dynamic documents, you know? We can always make the amendments, we can always revisit, you know, that kind of thing for sure.
Yeah, okay.
But we must have a budget.
So the reason I'm saying.
Under New York state law.
The budget as you presented, I think is a pretty good budget, right? It's taken into account a lot of the work that we've done internally in this capital plan. I agree with Justin, we got it, and everybody here, let's hammer out some things on the capital plan. The question is, is do I want to formally approve a budget that doesn't have the totality of the capital plan? Would I just want to let the budget officer move it forward to public hearing and then we all operate between now and the end of the month, knowing that we're working to get this thing done?
But I would point out that if you're looking at it in that basis, then you should look at the one year. Because my budget is only reflective of your first year.
Yeah, that's true.
Here, the rest of it.
Can we nail down that first year of the?
Is going to be, I mean, do we need to fix those other years? I think we need to make sure where we're moving those numbers. But if the budget reflects what the first year of the multi-year capital plan is looking at. I wouldn't think there's a reason not to, and I would say at this point it does, because. We've gone through to the fine team.
I mean, we've already gone through this list and man done the matching, you know? I mean, I I'm pretty confident with that. I think everybody did some really great work, you know, so.
So let's nail down point to point on this.
The first year.
Year two, because that's the work we gotta get done before the end of the next month. Yeah. Um, all right, I'm just gonna skip ahead, you guys, someday down when you need to.
Well, thanks so much again.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right. So let me just say first, Zach, I know there's a lot of stuff that you want, some stuff you're not gonna get. Eventually, we're gonna figure out, we're gonna have to things in year two, three, and four. To a degree, you're gonna have to pick what those items are according to the ninety-nine G or whatever, you have to have a little specificity to it. Rather than just a broad number going into reserve for vehicles. We actually have to list what those vehicles are. What's interesting is to our portfolio comment of putting money in reserve and pulling it out. If it's in the capital plan, then you just put it in the general budget and it comes out the final sentence. You don't even have to hit the reserves. It's just a known thing, right? So we may have a day where we eventually get to reserves, right? But the money hitting the general fund is essentially buying the items.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a point.
So.
Good point, thank you.
Okay, uh, I'm just going right down to the items that are not related to the far right in the general fund, the sewer are somehow being funded. So this truck three. Moved to twenty-six or twenty-five, twenty-six, seventy grand. Uh, Dorothy, has that truck made it over to the twenty-five, twenty-six?
No, it has not.
Okay, so this is a yes to move it, but it's gonna add seventy grand to process and it's in the next year. And I'm just gonna put truck three on that page. So. Uh, this then goes to the additional pickup. Was that the? Was was that supposed to be the green? Was that the green, the lightning one?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm still hoping that is the climate smart. Um, we're gonna. We should have climate smart budget or capital plan, but it doesn't have to be this capital plan. So the things that we identify like ARPA. The joint authority and the climate smart, we don't have to be as part of the capital plan. That's.
We're aware of that. We're good.
Okay, good. So that's why anytime we kick those things out, we'll kick them out. So just, just.
I didn't understand that.
Okay, so I've got, uh, we confirmed that we're gonna move the, um. Uh, truck three down to the subsequent year and the additional pickup is gonna move out to the climate smart.
Yes, yeah.
Got it, thanks. And I think, like we've done here on page two of twenty-four, twenty-five, when we have some money that we know we can spend, it's good to put it in there, right? But technically, the the grants are not part of the five-year capital funding, I don't think, right? It's my understanding that the grant money is sort of removed from the capital plan and the capital plan is just everything else.
Well, it is, it is. In keep, in heading, it's hitting your budget.
Right.
Because we we front the money.
Right, well, and actually what you would do is establish a capital project for that, move the money from the general fund. From the reserve into that to pay for the items and then that.
Then we're.
Then wait for the reimbursement.
Then we reverse.
So maybe the right thing to do is all those other things like the climate smart, the additional pickup. Let's work on the basis of, let's settle on all that stuff and then amend the capital plan and put it back in.
Okay, so we know it's down the road.
The other, the other thing that, okay, maybe, maybe it's also helpful if. We we want to talk about the priority of these items too, and I think that perhaps, um. Maybe what we're saying is that some of this climate smart stuff is. The the priority level is dependent on organizing that funding, right? And and so it's really just kind of a priority flag in the main plan of something. Yeah, and there may be times where, you know, let's say we need an additional pickup anyway, and we don't have the climate smart funding to do it, we might just have to do it. So by keeping some of the bigger items in the plan that you simply can. But I do think some of these items, it's okay to pull them out with the idea that we amended it, put it back in.
Okay.
Yeah, and and just on the note of amending by a two-thirds vote, anytime in the next year, we can amend this plan.
Right, yeah, that's true too.
Right.
Again, it's a dynamic document to the extent that, you know, this is like the first big.
Right.
Kind of wave of getting this all put together.
That's right.
It's been amazing.
It'll be great to have, next year, pretty much taking care of the whole gap for next year.
Yeah, so you kind of know what's queued up.
Yeah.
I know, I I know where you're going for sure.
Um, so skipping the big truck, uh, truck one. Because that says the third to twenty-five, twenty-six is not, it's in this budget year as a ban, so.
Yep.
Correct that. All right. We got the bobcat, so we gotta push that out of here. Keep in mind, we might push things out of here and then end up needing to push them again.
I think it, I think to be honest, just looking at these, these need to be pushed a couple of years.
Yeah.
Oh, I think so too. Getting it to next year.
We're just working with this first year.
Yeah, we want it to match with the budget.
Right, and then we get to start with the budget.
All right, so the bobcat is booted. And then we've got a couple of things that are in, and then we've got replace three standing pilot hanging, there's nothing. Before we get to that, Dave, can we talk about the security fence? Um, I I personally, I wouldn't spend ten thousand dollars mostly on a big chain like fence. Uh, so my. I'm I'm hesitant about that. I'm okay with the split rail, I guess. I don't.
The space, we're raising it.
It doesn't matter much, but I think before we're talking about big entrance gates and, um, split rail and chain link fences, I would. Have that be a board discussion. I I agree with that in the basis that we put it in there thinking that we were going to talk about it, have some plans, have a, have us all agree. I'd like to keep the ten grand in the budget going to that reserve. Okay, but I I want to kick, I want to kick the line or the item out. So we we can fund a reserve, okay, to put it into DPW. And just not have that item be in there. We could put that item two years out. Right? I'm not saying we do it two years from now, or we can put it in next year.
You mean the chain link fence part, the other phase? Because the first phase, we had already talked about. To move forward would be just simply doing the split rail. Um, to to at least have that be helpful for safety.
As I recall, the conversation was looking at the split rail and signage for the year.
That's what I had in mind.
Yeah, so let's look at, let's look at the plan, let's assign, let's make plenty of time to do that, right? I I just want to see a plan in place and say, let's do it, but I I I would say, keep the ten grand in the reserve, keep it in the budget as it is, so no change to budget. Just take.
Take the line out?
Take the line out and just have it be DPW, um. Safety improvements or security improvements. That's a lot for security improvements for the, I mean, I I just wondered what you're doing with that, then, you know, since this is here, I don't know if we need ten grand on.
If it's going into a reserve, it doesn't mean to get spent until you decide, and it's a, it's a different mechanism to pull it out of the reserve.
And the split rail is not, is you you've priced that out. It's not ten thousand.
I got a plan.
Yes. Hang on, folks, hang on. I want to have our superintendent of the DPW address the board, because we've all had this discussion in quite a bit of detail. And have had talked about the split rail fence. You've already moved forward in terms of what what's this gonna take?
Yeah, got a quote from the contractor to install, uh, is it roughly around four, uh, linear feet of split rail fence for seventy-five hundred dollars? Um, and that's the contractor doing it. If we're to do ourselves, you know. Piece by piece, as we found time to be able to do so, we could do it just for the cost of material, which would be a fraction of seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh, so it'd be a lot cheaper.
So we could do it for three thousand.
We could, um, and then.
You know, ruffle.
Yeah, but.
Which is what they've been trying to sort through.
So that's just along, I I don't, I can't visualize how many square feet that is, or how many linear feet that is. That's just along the canal trail, basically.
Yeah, this was presented to the board, uh, was it last fall, maybe?
Uh, yeah, you and I walked.
Yeah, and you had walked it and had taken a look at the layout.
Discuss the idea, so from tree line on the west end of the property down to where, um, the access road leads out to the canal. And then from there, cutting that.
Could you do this?
Diagon across the area or a travel.
Could you put that whole line on it next year? And just have it be funded from reserves, keep it in the budget line as ten grand with some reserves. So it's still in the budget, it hits reserves.
And then what do we do about safety and security this this year?
Uh, we see the final plan and we make a decision to advance and then we don't fund the reserves for ten grand before the end of the year. We've. Already put it in the budget. We'll have seven grand left over if they build it themselves. Yeah, I I think it's good that, you know, I can, I I do recall walking it, but I think the whole board should see it before we agree to pay for it.
Scott Harter brought this back to the board.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
We we we, you know what, we're gonna go through the minutes, we're gonna send the minutes back to the board. Scott Harter's. Went through this.
I I understand that you want this, Mayor, but I think we're we're deciding on the budget now, and I think if it's not just that, um. You know, we don't have the plan in front of us, we're not on the same page about this, let's look at the plan at a subsequent meeting and then add it to the, um, capital plan.
I get all that, I really do, but, um, I I think, you know, we have all agreed that there was a safety issue. And that's why we had split it up into two different parts, potentially. I get where you're going with the chain link, your concerns about that. The the discussion and the discussion that we had with our village engineer. Was the layout of that split rail and doing the appropriate signage and directing people. This came before the board. Let's bring it back out, let's get get everybody back on the same page so we all understand what that is. We can put it on another agenda and, um, because we do have to get the approval to go forward with it from the board.
Right.
Uh, and bring it back, okay, and then, um, we can work with Canal Corporation as well.
I mean, if you want to put three thousand for a split rail fence along the canal, fine, but.
I mean, why are we putting three K in a?
Let's just keep, here's what I meant to, keep the ten K in the budget on reserves, take this entire line and put it down in next year. And get it done this year, you just move it from the reserves that we just identified was being forwarded.
Okay, let's do that, just because I'm not gonna die in the hill, but I'm gonna die in the hill for security.
But I I think that we need to, that, yeah, we we.
Okay, so this goes into the next year.
Well, I I wouldn't just, I mean, none of us have said we want to, you're you're saying that we don't want a chain link fence, so why would we move the chain link fence to the next year?
I've not, hang on, hang on. I I'm not, I'm not against a chain link fence, because I know what the discussion has been for.
I mean, I I just haven't heard any board members say they want to spend ten grand on a chain link fence, so I would at least get rid of that item. Just put DPW security.
Security, let's just make it general.
We're gonna talk about it anyways.
Chain link fences don't exist. There we go, security and improvements.
Very simple.
Simple.
Sure, broad category, security and improvements, ten K next year, how's that?
Got it.
Okay.
Question.
Yeah, sure.
Do I understand that this this appropriation is not in the budget? This is only in the capital plan?
Do I understand that this, this appropriation is not in the budget, this is only in the capital plan?
I'm sorry.
Also likely to be in our budget.
No, this isn't in the, it's in the budget, only in the reserve stands.
Okay, got it.
And that's where it is.
Yeah.
So we change that with general.
Are we gonna have the final discussion here?
Fantastic.
Good, alright, utility mapping twenty grand, five grand retaining wall, uh, page one. And then the hanging furnaces, there's no dollar amount there.
It was fifteen thousand.
Okay, is that in this budget or?
So why was that taken out, that was, that was from a previous meeting?
Hold on. It went back and forth.
Yes, it did.
Let me see what I did.
There was a notable place that needed, so maybe we're just gonna keep them.
It's in the budget.
Okay, so then that's gonna slot in.
We'll just add the amount, yeah.
Twenty thousand is in the budget, five thousand for miscellaneous that could happen, fifteen for the premises.
Okay, so there's twenty grand over, well, how much have we sewered, the twenty two percent standard and customary?
Um, I didn't sign anything sewer because when the board directed me to put sewer budget together, I was to take the minimal bare bones and that's what I took this year.
But we're funding a big project for the bathroom, so right now the twenty grand for that is on the general.
Fifteen's there for the general.
Fifteen or twenty?
Well, there's twenty budgeted, five for anything that could possibly happen, just because you don't have.
There's two lines, two lines, one line, twenty grand.
One, one line, but it's under DPW.
Yeah.
Think I know this one better. It's under Hawaii, Hawaii, highway garage maintenance.
Hawaii, we're going, it's in the budget.
Under.
Cause it's a maintenance, right?
Okay.
Okay. But it has, it has to be done and that's where you put.
I swear.
When it's in a, when it's in a uh, uh, plan like this, does the line?
It, the line could actually just come out, because it's a budgeted item. It's already accounted for, doesn't need to, that's where. Yeah, maintenance, it's just a maintenance item.
Alright, so anyway, it's under maintenance, it's under generals, it is funded, so all that ninety nine G just requires us to do is funded in the budget.
It's.
It doesn't mean, it doesn't tell us where, how, how it has to be defined or not, it just has to be funded.
Okay, so then this line comes out.
Yes, uh, no, the line stays in.
You wanted, and you just wanna recognize the twenty, okay, that's all, okay.
Yeah, that's actually, because it's in the general, what the capital plan tells us is, we have to pay for it.
Mm-hmm, right.
Yep, understood, okay. Alright, I can put the fifteen thousand in, put it back in. Okay, and then I'm gonna change, I gotta change in the, on the, on the year, but it's fine.
Okay, it doesn't require a change to the budget.
No, it's just how I know. I need to minus it from contractual and then add it to the other.
Okay, so um, the next one, I wanna work with exactly how we're doing the funds. We're funding twenty grand into the DPW building maintenance, okay? But rather than defining it as done this year, we're gonna put it into next year.
Yeah, that's the note I made.
Right.
That's your update. Right.
We've earned it.
Yeah.
Awesome. So it's already not.
Yeah. We just asked you to move.
Well, but we're not gonna say that it's uh, convert the areas to offices, we're gonna be more general and just.
We can put it reserved.
For building maintenance, right? Is that what you're saying, Dave, or are you saying leave the?
I thought you were on fencing.
Yeah.
You said fencing, Dave.
You're on, oh, okay, you said fencing.
Oh, so you said fencing when you met.
Do the same thing, like.
And you put all, all together.
The reserve.
So do you also wanna make the verbiage general and say that this is twenty grand going to DPW building maintenance improvements?
I would say DPW building office maintenance and improvements.
Yeah.
I'm dedicated to the state is for office, but the exact layout is. So let's be pretty clear, for office improvements, right? But when it gets to reserve. Like, if we end up not putting money in reserve because we're doing for the office in this year's budget, is that twenty grand is in this year's budget? So you can essentially come to us through the plan and grab that money for it's the reserve.
Okay, so where else are we on this, this particular year?
Episode. Alright, so grant dorm, um, this pharmacy is to. Okay, so here is where we have priority items that are in the cap plan, and we have to figure out funding, the funding right now are these four things, okay? Uh, essentially, they're not in the budget, right? Or are they in the budget?
They should.
They are.
No, they're not in the budget.
They're not in the budget, do they have to be in the budget?
Wait a minute, I changed numbers so many.
I know, she's, she's on like her fortieth spreadsheet.
No, they're in the budget.
They're in the budget, and then the money is coming back from the grant.
Right.
Yeah, it's about, okay, we're gonna use the reserve, pay for the.
Front the money.
Front the money, and then we'll refund the reserve when the grant dorm refunds us, so that.
It's just one hour.
Yeah.
Yep. Alright, so we've got, just let's go from the bottom to the top. Uh, electrical service and upgrade needs, I'm not an electrician, I've heard from various number of folks that we need to do something. I, exactly what, again, I'm not an electrician, I'm fine for now saying, we're gonna do it for that. And just have somebody come in and tell us what it's gonna cost.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Um, after that, the new slabs and the replacement of the bases in the columns for this building, right, that's a pretty specific item, but we know we need it.
Mm-hmm.
If that's the costs thereof, like, what are we gonna do different?
Those are the estimates we presented.
The estimate we have.
We're already. And the dormitory is aware of the estimates, in other words, this has already been passed through to the New York City.
And this is money, this isn't like ARPA that it's done at the end of the year, but it's pretty darn close to done if we don't get it.
We, yeah, we don't wanna lose the money, but this grant came, what?
Two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, so it's, it's been hanging around.
And this is also the grant that has to be for new items or improvements, what?
It has to be new items, our hope it would could be for refurbish, you know.
Can't.
Rehabilitate, you know, when it comes to this, they don't recognize historic preservation.
Yep, and it's just for this building.
Not for this grant, again, just.
Just for this grant.
They don't recognize historic conservation needs for rehabilitation, like, we need, you know, like our windows, they wanted to do that.
Yeah.
They wouldn't recognize that, that this particular language in this grant is only here to anything new on this particular building.
And it has to be this building.
That's why they're saying, oh, new slabs, oh, you know.
Right, okay. My only challenge then is gonna be the HVAC, because here's an item that for the climate smart community offers us a lot of points, right? Sure, but when we get money from the climate smart community, we can spend it on other things that are climate smart, this could be one of them. So my question is, is there anything else that this building needs that's new?
That's the short answer is no, we, we went down this path, and, and, and understand though, it's not a, it's not like we're losing anything with climate smart by using this particular. Let me finish my thought, this grant money, there's so many other opportunities and this, the points we get, just even by using. Grant money, which we're gonna be reimbursed for, just builds the point of rule even further.
But this is where we have to delineate between opportunities and needs, right, because we were talking.
Oh, this is a need.
I know this is, but we're saying that there are other opportunities, but do we need those other opportunities? I know that this is a need, that's why Dave was saying, like, we have a need, a certain need here.
How else would you wanna fund that?
Well, okay.
From others, from other.
Well, hang on, hang on.
Yeah, it's a good question.
How else would you wanna fund it, when we have money that we know we can get forty five thousand dollars back, we can still meet all the criteria for climate smart. Get the additional level of funding that has no matching funds required.
Which you might.
Further reinvest in sustainable projects for the community and the, you know.
Is this matching, what is this?
That's a hundred percent.
This is a hundred percent.
So in a way, it's all state money, whether or not it's through the climate smart program or through this money, it's all state money.
But you have to understand that this, that the green.
Yep.
Section that we're looking at can only be used.
Yeah.
For the needs in this building.
Right.
That is the restriction on it and things that are new. So if you can come up with forty five thousand dollars out of this grant for something else new in this building, please let me know.
And it needs to be something substantial, it can't.
Yeah, it can't be. It can't be, you know, this and then it can't, you know.
Well, that will trigger an asbestos abatement, and you do not wanna go down that.
You're welcome, Bill, at all. And, 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 and let's, let's talk through that a little bit, so. I'm thinking, do I wanna keep two oil burning furnaces going um, that are on their last legs that were identified. More than a decade ago, of need requiring replacement, but I just wanna hardwood floor, I know what my.
I, I.
You know.
This is why I'm exploring the conversation. Alright.
I'm exploring with you.
This is good, um.
And T I S.
Anything else identified, anything else that we knew that this building needs, or are we comfortable moving forward with grant payments with the premises?
And windows, would you?
No.
Unless you do.
Are we, are we good with this, is, I guess is where I'm going.
I'm good with that.
Anything else?
And, and.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have anything else on this, alright.
But you can look at it, it could trigger enough points to buy the truck.
Hey, moving on, I'll worry about the truck later.
But, I mean, just so you see where I'm going, I mean, this is, there's no downside, you know, doing this.
It's.
Plus, we have energy savings, which is great.
Uh, front, oh, ARPA, we're gonna do more work on our, for now, we've got two things in there.
Mm-hmm.
If we don't have something in that, in this capital plan, it's okay, it doesn't mean that we won't do it, it doesn't mean that ARPA may not come back and get it. But I think if we start having the discussion in this board right now, using capital plan approved and adopted, and we're putting ten grand of upgrades to sound and video, it might be worth more of a discussion. Not saying we don't need it, I'm just saying, could we maybe punt it? Right, pull it out and bring it back later as an amendment once we go through the whole ARPA discussion.
So you just want me to remove the ARPA things from the capital plan totally?
No.
That one, I'm.
Yeah, we need to have that.
Yeah.
That's all tied.
Right, front porch, that's all.
What we're doing to them being from ARPA as opposed to using that funding ARPA for something else, I mean, I agree, the front porch needs to be done, I don't.
So are we, the, the front, we're trying about this, the upgrade, just removing that for now.
Yeah, removing the upgraded sound video, and we're talking about the front porch and the.
The front porch is a safety issue, right now, you can talk about the railings, what, what you folks did.
Electric tape that's holding the railings together, you know?
Yeah, yeah, the electric tape holding the.
Railings.
Holding the railings together.
We need it, and I think we need it in our, we lose our, we don't spend it, so why don't we just use it?
I, I think, and I think. And also, you know, this is the people's house, I mean, this is, you know, we wanna maintain and, and take care.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with historic structure. I'm fine with the porch, but I would like to hunt that upgrade to sound and video for a while soon, so we can, we can.
How about we take out all the office stuff? And that can be a budget amendment at some point, because it's not in the budget.
Oh.
Okay, it's not in the budget, we'll have a whole.
So we can have a discussion.
Yeah.
If you do that, okay?
Okay.
Don't take out the front porch balcony, that's rod on restoration. Put it into next year's. Geez, here's the thing. I wanna get that done, we have our money, we have to use it, I would say, keep that line in there, keep the front porch line in there, okay? All we have to remember is we have ARPA money left.
Yeah, and we're doing a separate sheet for the board to show what, what we were seeing, where it's been distributed.
So here's, I, I guess my, my concern is that if we keep saying, okay, so we're gonna use this little bit for this maintenance project, this little bit for this maintenance project. We end up burning it all on just regular maintenance stuff, and, which, you know, is, is stuff that needs to get done, but. You know, then we're still using this one shot revenue for maintenance and, and burning it all that way, rather than doing. Other cool things for the, the community that I, I think we could really use this grant money for in part. So what I would say is that if we're, if we're doing that, we also think about, um, yes, pushing aside the upgraded sound and video, because. I don't know if any taxpayers wanna spend, you know, put ten thousand dollars of money towards listening to us, because we usually don't get that much of an audience anyway. Um, but I would maybe use that for something else like the arboretum, the, the trail that goes from the canal to the um, the arboretum, since that's something that's called for on the cap plan. It's related to security.
I am thinking. I cannot believe, we have electrical tape holding together historic wrought iron railings, that is a safety issue.
I'm saying we do that, I'm saying we.
Okay, we do that.
But I'm also saying that we take out the sound and video and we.
We've all just said that, we've all just said that.
I think we're all on agree.
Okay, tick tock.
But I'm, I'm saying, let's use that ten grand, let's decide to also use that little grant.
I wanna see, I want the board to get the entire R B C, of what, exactly, of what the previous board decided on, you often take a look at that. And then what has already been dispersed and how it's, some of this is already being.
Okay, so we're gonna take off, we're not gonna put the front uh, portion balcony on ARPA?
I, I would keep it on ARPA.
Well, you just said we're gonna take a look at all of ARPA, I would either do both.
I'm saying this is already spoken for out of ARPA, the board has agreed to this. What you're gonna get is what's been spoken for, what's already been spent, what is left. For this board to decide, the rest of the dispersment, which has to happen this year.
We.
What, what am I missing?
There's sixty two grand roughly.
No.
Let me go through, I have the numbers right.
You have them, okay, here we go.
After everything that's already been spent out of ARPA, we have ninety eight thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty one cents.
Good.
The board, and when they originally designated the funds, they agreed to spend fifteen thousand on invasive removals for Village Wide and the Arboretum.
Yep.
They also agreed to use fifty thousand towards the bathroom project, and so after I take out the sixty five thousand, that leaves us with thirty three thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty one cents, I can't get rid of the sixty one cents. The railings, if we go ahead with the railings, that's fourteen five, and we take out the meeting room, that's ten. That's twenty four five coming under thirty three, we're less than ten thousand left. I mean, we're, but even ten grand, if you just look at the sixty five, and then you wanna decide on railings and whatever else, you're looking at thirty three thousand.
Okay, here's my thought, keep the invasives, keep the bathroom. Get the front porch, I understand we could have put it somewhere else and use the ARPA money somehow else, but we only have a year to get the ARPA money. And then let's talk about the remaining ten grand.
I agree.
That's exactly where we ended up, great, okay, moving on.
Can we generally have a majority on?
I think we do.
I agree with that.
It's all.
No.
We're gonna.
The balcony that's in, and then the remaining ARPA.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
We're gonna.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Alright, so we got ten grand of ARPA money, let's talk about, and everything else has to go through the general approval and get it done some process. Um, identify areas concerned and revenue, ten grand conditions, what is this, assessment of basement foundation?
Yeah, this was, there was concern at one time that this correction my attention of our basement and leaking into the foundation, Zach actually need. Had an assessment done.
Yes, to dig along the side of the foundation, uh, close to where the uh, air conditioning units are. Um, from the inside corner to the outside corner of the building, um, put in like, crack and a pump. And waterproof the walls, uh, is verbally quoted to me for seven.
I'm sorry, for how much?
Seven thousand nine.
Okay, so we know what, what that is.
This is.
So is that maintenance?
Yeah.
This is an now item, right, I'm sorry, this is an now item.
Yeah, like, you don't want to hold it twenty five, twenty six, so mechanical room houses everything electronic as well.
Yeah.
So any moisture that's in that room is going to affect our new trunks, so preserve that, I would say it's a no.
Alright, currently not in.
The budget.
Budget nor the capital plan.
It, because it was something that was brought, and I needed Zach to go get somebody into, we wanted to put it on.
Yep.
But since we really didn't know what was gonna be the impact, we kinda just said, we'll move it, but we need to get an assessment.
Okay, so it's in nothing right now.
Right.
Can we fit it in this year's budget with uh, what surplus you think we may have if we don't get the reserves?
Well, I just finished balancing February, and everything is looking.
Really?
Okay.
Well, we could. We could take it out of the general.
Now, we could find, we could.
We could, we could take seven nine hundred out of general, just.
I can squeeze around and look where I can find it, and we couldn't take it out.
Tried to put it down last year, so it doesn't change the tentative budget right now, right?
I can, I can try to save it out of this year, we'll get the formal, we'll have them. From Zach, we'll give you the formal estimate, we'll get the board to approve it, maybe at the next meeting if there, everybody's good to move forward.
Does that agree, agree, we need to get the foundation?
Yeah.
What, what's the, um, what are we seeing now, are we seeing the foundation buckling, are we seeing water intrusion?
Yeah, there's moisture in the wall.
Standing water, or just about wall?
Um, yeah, sometimes still.
Depends on the level of rain, doesn't it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Pretty.
I'm having more time.
Yeah, okay, alright, so that.
So I'll move it off the.
Just move it off, and bring it back.
I'll bring it next.
Maybe we've got to transfer to get it done.
Yeah, yep, make it happen, okay. Okay, so that, now we have gone through the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yep, and we moved three things, we did a couple of moves, three, we, uh, we got an additional pickup that's kind of the climate smart, you're gonna need it, it's kind of. Off the government plan for now entirely, so it looks way that wrong, when we do some of the climate smart stuff. And we got the Bobcat sixty-five grand, so. Those two items, they're not embedded in the twenty-six, right, they just fell off entirely, they didn't work.
They had to fall entirely, um, cause we kind of, what we did is, the thought was to move the equipment to. Off the thing to a hundred into the reserve funding, and let Zach pick what.
That's right, that's right.
Right.
Okay, so let's hit this up, we got the million dollars of the bond going into the roadwork, right? For twenty-five, twenty-six, southern ones in the capital plan, and also the budget projections for next year.
Yes.
Yes, okay, truck two, we've got that embedded in the floor, right, so that's the second major pickup, this is a huge win, right, Zach?
Oh, sure.
Okay, now, we've also got, uh, just to come back to last this year, for example, we had a hundred thousand dollars. Going into reserve, and I just wanted to mention, uh, there is. Fifty thousand being spent out of reserve, and then my question was. How much will we get in reserve for this year for vehicles?
We're putting into this year?
Yeah, how much did you put into reserve for vehicles this year?
Oh my gosh, I put a total of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand into reserves, we can still shift that around, cause we had money going into some technology. We had money going to infrastructure.
Oh no, I'm sorry, for the twenty, for twenty-five.
Oh, okay, for the twenty-four, twenty-five, I put in a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred was supposed to be for vehicles, thirty thousand was for infrastructure.
Okay, could we come back to that for a moment, to twenty-four, twenty-five, um, capital plan, cause I only see fifty thousand coming out. Were we gonna spend some of it on the truck? No. What was, see what I'm saying, if you look down.
Yeah.
There's only fifty grand coming out, does that mean we have another fifty grand?
Cause I changed it, I was, again.
Yep.
I'll make that back to a hundred. It's in there, I thought at one point I had to change it to fifty.
Okay.
You're, you're moving so many lines.
I was trying to smooth it, because I was worried I was gonna advance, so I think I was, was gonna have to reduce, but then I, I was able to make it a hundred.
What is truck fourteen?
It is a one ton.
How much does it cost?
About a hundred.
About a hundred grand, okay, so then coming back to twenty-four, twenty-five, when you see fifty and fifty, it's actually gonna be a hundred and a hundred. Alright, so that's another brand new vehicle, or whatever used vehicle you had to buy. Okay, so then when we get into twenty-five, twenty-six. You've got the two big items at the top being bonded. When I look down the row. Is that true, you've got a truck getting purchased by sewer?
Correct.
And that's just a straight up purchase using reserves?
Correct.
All funded by sewer. And, okay.
No, no, no.
No, I changed that.
No.
Um, no, I had that coming straight out of fund balance of sewer.
That, that's, that's.
It's drawing down. Fund balance in.
Oh, okay, I should say in fund balance.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it's, the fund balance in sewer is way high, it's not gonna get, we need to really, and what better use?
Yeah.
Something to need.
Yeah, that's something we need.
And it's the only sewer.
Well, I, I think, um, that's probably okay, but we should just keep an eye on that balance, because we've talked in the past about some of the. Um, the connections under the canal, one of those going, and then having a really huge expense coming up.
Yeah, which is why we have the three hundred thousand dollar reserve specifically set aside, catastrophic, yeah, the catastrophic, exactly, yeah. So.
No, I, I, I agree with checking it, but the fund balance, even with the.
This brings us back in alignment.
It's starting to, it really is.
Um, and then the flush truck reserve, then we can repurpose.
That was being repurposed, because that's one of the reserves that had the language that needed to be adjusted, so we can move that money into appropriate.
Yeah, and for better use, really, better reserves.
Alright, and then the only other couple items that actually hit next year's budget, according to what I'm looking at, is the mapping of utilities and, and. All asphalt from why the road heading south to property.
I don't.
What is that?
That's repaving the. Uh, so all the asphalt that would be, uh, leading up to and around.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's really done, yeah, I know, it's part of our.
EDW repavement.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so those items right now, we, we're saying we're gonna fund them out of general, and this makes sense. Um, we've got another hundred thousand for the vehicles clicking in.
You know, I couldn't put a four hundred thousand, I could put seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Cause that was part of smoothing it out to.
That was part of smoothing it out, but what I will point out. I have ninety-one thousand in surplus for twenty-five, twenty-six, um. So, don't crawl at me, when I put it into reserve, it kills the fund balance.
Yeah.
So, I'd rather make that decision at the end of the year, when we have more of a, and again, this is, and. This is all forecasting, and that's leaving a little leeway, cause you're getting into another budget year, I have no idea.
Because the way you have it now, the way I'm reading it, is that. We're good each year really with our fund house, we're so far above what is the current policy. But we can always amend going forward each time, when, you know, again, at the end of the year, you know.
Cause that's, you know, next year is okay, and that's still a guesstimate.
Got it, alright, so then what we're saying is, we'd like to commit seventy-five thousand to the capital plan. Keeping the ninety-one on the side.
As possible.
Okay, but right now, let's try and make the capital plan work with seventy-five grand.
Yep.
Okay, that means that we don't buy truck twelve, that means we don't do an installed trailer, well, how much does that cost?
Uh, I mean, it's been about fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay. Fourteen K. Uh, how much does the leak load, that's sixty K, the leak machine? Alright, so we need seventy-five grand of expenses, this is something we can amend and adjust, we kick the truck to the next year, the Kubota to the next year. We kick street light wire into the next.
And it's already in there to move up to the next year on the Kubota, yeah.
Okay, great, do we need?
It's not showing.
The twenty grand for the sidewalk streetlight wiring on the row, would you rather have that for the leak machine or the tilt trailer, like, which one's a priority here?
Um, I mean, I've already kind of prioritized them in this list.
Okay, great, we'll leave the one that.
Remember, they, that was the direction you gave in.
So let's do this, let's, let's get the, put the tilt trailer in, fourteen grand, and let's put, um. Well.
Oh, no, that was.
So you're putting seventy-five grand in reserves, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can you amend, well, this will be an amendment for applicable facts, we approved the tentative budget, we're moving forward tonight. This will be afterward, you'd wanna do this, but what I'm suggesting is, we put the Owens tilt trailer in as a purchase. In twenty-five, twenty-six, and then we put sixty K in reserve. Because that.
For the leak machine?
That will.
That won't affect the current year budget, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, I guess we could do that one.
That's just changing numbers.
But what it means is, we prioritize the leak machine over truck twelve, and. I, do you wanna do that, or, or would you rather have us put sixty grand in reserve for truck twelve, and then the next year you buy a truck twelve and push the leak machine out? So what, what we're trying to do is, play it in this year, what we can do, and if right now all we can do is seventy-five grand, would you rather get the leak machine?
Or do you want what's behind door number three?
Um, I would say I'd, I'd have to prioritize the machine over truck twelve, definitely.
If given the option.
Yes.
Like, find your reserve, right.
Okay, how do you guys all feel then, of putting fourteen grand, uh, into the trailer, sixty grand in the leak machine? And then, uh, truck twelve goes to the next year.
That's exactly.
Yes, that, I mean, I, I support, you know, you know, you know what the need. Yeah, I know, I know.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Just, uh, is there a backup plan in case, uh, something does fail to the point where we have to spend a lot of money to keep that going?
Ninety, ninety-one thousand dollars. That hopefully we don't need.
Okay. Yeah, just so I'm understanding, the fourteen thousand is gonna go into, is gonna be covered, we're gonna do it in twenty-five, twenty-six for the trailer.
Yeah.
I'm putting sixty thousand into the reserve instead of seventy-five.
No.
Line it up for the leak machine.
No, we, we are now saying yes to the leak machine in this year.
Okay, so sixty thousand, so seventy-four thousand is being added to the thing, so then, am I?
Truck twelve moves out.
The reserve funding goes away.
Oh, that's the piece I needed.
You're spending it upfront.
When you know what you need.
What you said earlier, which is.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
But just because, the reason why I'm comfortable doing this, because Justin, that ninety-nine G that you, you know, voted for and Jeff shared. Basically said, when you make these decisions, these are decisions, it's gonna take a little bit extra to change your mind with two thirds of it. So, I like, I'm a little more comfortable now, and just putting it in as a general line, and trying to fund the reserve and pull it back out.
It gives us a good amount of structure to.
Yeah.
Make sure that we're consistent with our decisions, right?
Okay, cool, alright, so that means truck twelve goes to the next year, okay? The Kubota's the next year. Uh, busque's done, the wiring is the next year. Okay? Um, and then we've got, how much retaining wall sidewalk, twenty-five grand. That's number eleven.
That's the base two.
Okay, that's also.
Base two, but we have further review needed, because we need Jeff to review who owns that retaining wall.
Can we push it? Yeah, we, we cut it in just in case, cause we didn't wanna kind of get, get a big surprise.
Yep.
Um, it may actually end up that, you know.
Sure, or not own it all.
Yeah, then it done that, which could be redistributed.
Now for this whole discussion, if they can make a mistake, which is, you just prioritize and put in the tilt trailer and leak machine, but you know what we forgot about?
We forgot about the stuff.
All the things we kicked off at twenty-four, twenty-five, so now, Zach, back to you. Truck three, Bobcat, an installed trailer and leak machine. You got seventy-five grand to spend, which is probably any one of the bigger ones.
Yeah, we covered truck three.
And the tilt trailer.
Yeah.
So, leak machine, truck three.
Well, on the absolute highest priority truck that was already deferred from prior year.
It was.
Yeah.
And I think, well, everything will have to move forward.
That's right.
That's truck three.
Truck three, okay, so truck three.
Replacing what, so what are we taking out now? Okay, so bye.
Okay, that's a little more than seventy-five.
I know.
Pushes up to about eighty-five grand if we do the.
Well, truck three is designated as seventy thousand, actually, twenty-two percent of that will come from.
Oh, that's true, that's true.
So you might be able to knock, uh, you still can do your tilt trailer.
So we're keep the tilt trailer, yeah, you're right, because we have to.
Okay.
Take that, okay, sewer, I'm putting in.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Tilt trailer is going twenty-five, twenty-six?
Six.
Tilt trailer staying in, yeah.
Off to twenty-six, twenty-seven, you're getting. You got a truck twelve. We got the.
But why are we going to twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Cause I'm, I'm moving things.
He's moving things to go to the next year after we've completed.
Right? I'm just putting it in place, yeah.
This is the reason why the last two, three years of the.
Right. Well, you can't get it, but we're gonna get a lot, this is how we get our real.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, and then the, uh. The, the truck, or whatever we call that. Alright, oh, routine wall.
Okay, so then the leak machine shows up in the following year?
Yeah, I'll let you just, there's one last thing on twenty-five, twenty-six, if you would repair concrete as needed and fill the sidewalls. Um, ten grand, is that?
Says move to next budget year, so is that already down?
Which one?
Uh, we're talking about, there's the page twenty-five, twenty-six, there's only one item on it. Um, I guess the last page is twenty-five, twenty-six.
Oh, that's the, the stairs.
Yeah, that's the front stair rail, when you come out of the porch, that rail.
Get it over here.
The concrete, that might be something Zach and the crew could do.
Okay, let's.
No, just, there's instructions for the shoes, so I'm.
Oh, up here.
Outside.
Going down.
Yes.
You can't touch that.
Uh, no, I'm going to say that that's a little beyond what we're capable of, because since it's.
Oh.
Unless our staff can change it.
Could we have, could we have, uh, whoever did the assessment for the drainage?
I already talked to him about it, and he is not a conflict.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I talked about the trench drain at the bottom of the stairs, which.
I was thinking of that too.
Or, and he said that's a possibility to dig into, but as for, um. Oh, the concrete, what then is to be done to the existing stair, um.
So we need to get a difference, a different bit, okay.
Okay. Well, let's. Right now, that's not in any of our long-term projections that we've granted it for, right, and as we get out farther, um. It just never comes in.
No.
We just need to, why don't we just put the ten K on it, and, I mean, cause it needs, we need to put a sum with the dollar.
I mean, it's gonna happen.
Just put it in that year, you wanna put it in this year, or you wanna try to pay for it, just like we did with the outside, and we have ten grand in this year.
Oh.
We wanna try to get it not.
I, I think it should, if, if we know there's a project, and, you know, we can ballpark it, say ten grand or something, I would put it in a year. With that project and that dollar amount that we provisioned on half, I don't think anybody disagrees about fixing the stairs.
No.
Yeah, again, that's a safety issue.
Right?
Um, cause that's a priority.
I, I don't know where it goes, I, I guess.
I don't either.
This year's budget.
It's not in this year's budget, it was something we were hoping to cover with the dormitory, it was not covered by the dormitory.
Yeah, that's, just leave it there, and all the ten grand and show it coming off the, the.
So.
So it stays in.
It's staying in, but I'm gonna actually put it into the actual equipment and capital out there, for the ten grand, I'm gonna add that in.
Yep.
Uh, I'm also adding in truck three, dispersing it between sewer, I'm keeping. Oh, you've got fourteen thousand for the tilt trailer, and. And I think I got it covered for next year, is that right?
Yes, yeah.
Let me just say, put ten grand into.
Twenty-five.
Five, twenty-six.
Correct.
Right, okay, so we're just gonna drop it to twenty-five, twenty-six, it doesn't affect this year's budget, it will affect.
Years out, but if we see an opportunity, maybe in next year, and we have a chance, and we estimate it's reasonable, we can do.
I mean, I, I think really where we are with the next couple of years is, is solid, and I appreciate, you know, just the input and. Looking at it, and, and it's tracking now with the budget, which is good.
Yeah.
So, because we're hoping to get that tentative budget vote.
Okay, so, now we're on to twenty-six, twenty-seven, Zach, we have hunted. On truck twelve, leaf machine, Bobcat, Voda, and routine wall.
The leaf machine you left in.
Wait, I thought we were signing, I thought.
No, no, I know, no, we didn't leave the lease machine in twenty-five, twenty-six, we kicked it out, cause we ended up paying for truck three.
Yes, but truck three is, we said twenty-two, we said it's gonna go to sewer, so it won't be the full seventy that we.
You took up the trailer instead.
Correct, I'll have the trailer.
So the leak machine's gotta go to the next year.
Oh, nevermind, I'm thinking.
Okay.
So do we have enough in our capital plan to, to take a look at that?
Right now, everything we've done is actually in line with the capital plan.
Exactly.
We, so we talked it through, we figured out how much was gonna go into different years of reserves and vehicles, and now, instead of having it go in reserves, we're just spending it. Bringing it forward into the immediate spend, so this goes to the next question, which is, how much did you have in the reserve column for twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven is an overall challenge, I hate twenty-six, twenty-seven, um, I'm gonna be quite honest, because that's when numbers start getting really. Iffy.
Yeah.
Um, I have thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars to be precise, and that's when I end up with the zero, that means what's coming in is going out.
No reserve.
Yeah, it's all a hundred and four.
Well, that's thirty-two thousand into.
Into it.
Oh.
Yeah, but then after that, it's all.
Eh, then it was a zero, there was no anticipated surplus, there's nothing.
Let's talk about the why. We're getting roads done, we're buying two big dump trucks. The costs of the debt are now on the budget.
Correct.
It's about two hundred, hundred and fifty grand.
Uh, it's two hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty, was my guess.
That was my first guess, so the two bonds are probably one fifty, one seventy five of that, and then the other two are the trucks.
Yeah.
Okay, this is why, two years from now, we're trying to do a little bit of a haul. So, there's a point where we can cross our fingers, that we get property value assessments, okay? And they move up, but we eventually have a higher level, you're gonna have possibly a little bit of inflation on sales tax, but quite honestly, that's just off social. It doesn't help us at all.
Correct.
So we've got a problem, right, do we put in or do we show in a long term plan, another, call it a hundred grand of expenses? And just assume in the long term plan, we're gonna pay for it with the tax increase, or can we embed in the long term plan, the assess? I think we should plan on assessments moving up, we're eighty one percent of value. I think we should put ninety percent of that and assume that happens, cuz it's gonna happen.
Say, in in the next few years?
Or, the alternative is.
I know.
The alternative is, we're adopting capital plan that shows a twenty eight percent increase.
I know, yeah.
Um.
I'm going down the list of the ninety nine G stuff here to see if it gives us any indication about, you know, how we're supposed to account for that. Um, I don't see it yet, I think the most conservative form is probably to plan on the tax increase, as something that we count on. Rather than.
We have no control over the assessment.
Right.
You know.
Well, currently, I'm showing for the year seven percent.
Alright, let's allocate.
And if we get the assessment in the interim, then it's the amendment, then we go back and.
So let's. I think that's true.
You know.
Let's stay consistent with the prior year, and allocate seventy five grand to vehicles, and maybe twenty grand, twenty five grand to other stuff. So that's a hundred grand, and what it does to taxes, it does to taxes, and we hope that. That's not gonna get everything, so this year right now, we've got a tool cap that is introduced as a new vehicle, need a trailer, how much is the six by eight trailer? Um.
At that point, I'm guessing.
No, no, today's prices.
Today's prices, four thousand.
Alright, minus your current value?
Maybe six hundred bucks, so.
Well, you can get a six by eight trailer for six hundred bucks.
No, no, meaning that's what it's worth.
Okay, so it's gonna be four grand, adjusted for inflation, so just five grand, so that's. Uh, the one ton rule is twelve grand in today's values, alright, so let's prioritize, um, truck two, so. I'm gonna list these things up and tell me what's priority, truck twelve, leaf machine, bobcat, Kubota. Or, leaving that. For the two best.
Well, bobcat is coming off of the twenty four, twenty five, so that'll be the next in line for highest priority.
That's the highest priority next one.
I believe so, I think the other ones are coming up to the twenty five, twenty six.
Okay.
Uh, truck twelve, maybe the leaf machine.
So then, we're we're going for the bobcat.
We, and the bobcat was the one that was the farthest delayed from.
Right.
Okay, so that's sixty five grand. Uh, that's close to seventy five, um.
And that'll replace the tool cat?
Hmm, no, that's the bobcat.
Oh, I see what you're saying there, yeah, so, of all the things that we're doing, we're trying to take another hundred grand and allocate.
You see where.
And I think we do the bobcat, and maybe we put on the Kubota. Which is twenty four thousand, that gets us to ninety grand, and maybe we add in the one ton Kubota, that gets.
Okay, is any of these equipments associated with sewer?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm asking my buddy to sign.
He, yes. They can, they can all be.
Okay, so that gives us another twenty two thousand.
Um, okay, so we're netting out sewer for part of it, part of the the percentage, okay.
The leak machine isn't.
How about truck twelve? Yeah, can't do it, was the leak machine in that list, uh?
Yes.
You were asking about the source.
Uh, well, that can be cuz it prevents leaves from going into the sewer.
Well done.
I mean, that's, that's what we use for, right?
Uh, so sewer is the. Let them open manholes and showing leaves, alright, alright.
I have a swing. What if we do in that year to get to about a hundred grand, again, we're gonna come back and revisit this, but what if we keep the one ton roller, the Kubota and the box?
Okay, after the sewer is taken out, that's seventy eight, eight.
Yeah, so we could spend, put the retaining wall in there from the prior.
Well, we don't, we don't know that yet.
We don't know if we own it.
We don't even know if we own it.
So then we're just kicking it off, capital plan altogether until we know?
I, that's why I think it needs to be under review, I think we need solid numbers.
Okay, about putting it, putting it.
Let's keep it off.
Yeah, let's take it off, I think, I think the board, if if we do decide that we own that, then that would be the case where we would have. We put some dirt in, right?
Great. Um.
Okay, I've I have, I've got, I'm.
Okay, so.
So, and do we have enough time to take a look at this, and can we hold on this, and we we've gotten through the first, our year?
Well, Dorothy has a hard start.
I was supposed to say, but my presentation insists.
Well, I think, what we could do is, we could pause with the understanding that right now. This tentative budget is everything we just talked about, and the way it's projected for for the next, the second and the third year. Is everything we just funded, but we identified what they were, and we kicked everything else for, we're in the middle of it, but what we would want. You know, Dorothea, next time would be this thing improved upon, right, based on everything we just said? I, I don't know, I'm looking at the tentative button, thinking it's exactly what we just planned, and I just need a commitment from everybody that we will adopt this.
We can make a motion.
And to the final budget.
Well, we need a motion for the tentative.
When are you looking to put this on so I can make these changes, just knowing?
The next few, be great.
Okay.
What can we do, can you get it to us by Friday of next week?
Friday of next week, yes, yes, that I can do, it's just the next few days, I gotta get. Cuz we've had a packet every week, and we gotta get a packet done, I gotta get the budget packet ready for next Tuesday. Um, and I gotta prep the legal notice for the budget, which is a whole process.
Right, that's a simple.
So, I just, I'm, just wanna be realistic, cuz if I'm gonna.
My next Friday?
Right, yeah.
And then we're gonna have a meeting is.
Well.
The following Tuesday? The next budget meeting?
Yes.
So we would have it by the.
I'm gonna read you the dates.
Have.
Next Friday's package.
Tentative budget to a public hearing for next Tuesday night, right? Is that right?
No, the budget hearing wouldn't be until April ninth.
But but we need to vote on it now to.
Right.
Get the process done to bring it to the public.
So we need a vote on.
Even if you're still working on all this stuff, we just need.
We need a vote on accepting tentative budget so that it can be moved to public.
Before we do that, I I understand Dave's point too about making sure that we're gonna continue working on the the capital plan, the intent to adopt it. I wonder if we could, even if it's just a kind of an administrative thing, um, uh, have a resolution to um, direct the clerk. To continue to work on the budget, um, pursuing, uh, the cap, I'm sorry, the capital plan, uh, pursuant to ninety nine G.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
So I'll beiterate that, and so this is direction, cuz it's to direct the clerk to continue to work on the capital plan. Um.
Pursuant.
Um, pursuant to uh, the description in G M L ninety nine G.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Landfair.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Yeah.
Motion.
Okay, your motion, Lisa.
Okay, so, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt tentative general budget.
And move it to public.
And move it to public hearing.
Can I just clarify, the the last one, what was the roll call to near to you on paper though? Oh, great, I just couldn't quite.
Yeah, we're unanimous and, you know.
We're on.
Okay.
Okay, so, do I have a second to move the general budget? Tentative general budget to public hearing.
On the date and the time, we need the date and the.
I have a hearing.
April ninth at six.
Six o'clock?
April nine.
April nine.
Six, six P M.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Do we have a second?
Second, okay, roll call please. Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Landfair.
Hi.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay.
And we got sewer.
Yes.
Yep.
I make a motion to uh, approve the tentative sewer budget and bring it to public hearing, hearing on April ninth at six P M, do I have a second?
Okay.
Roll call please, trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Landfair.
Hi.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, um. Well, we're through our items, and you're past your hard stuff.
I know.
Thank you so much, Doug, for doing that, it's good that we have the full board.
As well, that's why.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
For all the challenging.
Yeah, amazing work, you guys.
But we have come really far.
Oh, I think this is fantastic, I really do, and. Total high fives to Dorothea, and Dave, thank you for your input too, when you came in and worked with her as well, and everybody else's input, it's been really good.
Can I ask my finance experts, when, can you give me your elevator speech when the residents ask why they were signing?